Hearing of the Gardener Planning Board. We'll open with the announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the Chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the Director of Community Development and Planning pursuant to the Open Meeting and Public Records Law. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. Is there anyone in here tonight recording or taping who needs to identify themselves to the Chair? Hearing none. I will now read the public hearing notice into the minutes. Public hearing notice Compass Lane Definitive Subdivision in accordance with the City of Gardener rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land. Notice is hereby given that the Gardener Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 12th at 6:30 PM in the Hubbard Conference Room, City Hall Menka Annex, Pleasant Street, Gardener, Mass. To consider the definitive subdivision plan and application submitted by Private Oversight LLC, 25 Lombard Road, Hubbardston, Mass. The Compass Lane definitive subdivision plan depicts a 900 linear foot cul-de-sac with 16 parcels and 16 two-family dwelling units. The developable area of the site consists of 6.6 acres with 10.1 acres being left undeveloped. The Puck property is located at the Templeton Gardner Town Line on the south side of West Broadway. Plans are also available for viewing in the Department of Community Development and Planning in room 201 of the City Hall Annex. All persons interested in this matter or who desire to offer testimony are invited to participate. All right, before we get to presentation time, any preliminaries for us, Mr. Beauregard?
Right now, Mr. Chair.
Very well. Mr. Fletcher is on board.
Yes, how you doing? Trevor Fletcher, Nebraska Engineering. Turn that on. You got her up? Do it full screen. Yes, so this is the subdivision that you're all probably familiar with at this time. We went through the preliminary hearing, I think, back in the summer at some point. And since that point, we've done, you know, we prepared the definitive plans, 18 sheets with all the stormwater details, the landscape details, lighting details, and all that stuff. It is still currently being reviewed. We're getting comments in. But yeah, we have a 16 lot definitive subdivision. Each of the lots is planned to have a duplex on it. And so that is the lot layout right there. This is the remaining area in the back that will be left largely open space to the northeast. There's the PACC land. And it all kind of slopes back that way. And then even further back to the southeast is Route 2. So there's not much back there, but it'll be left undeveloped in that area. So this is the beginning of the roadway here. So if you remember the site plan design that we had for the multifamily, it's a similar thing. The infiltration basin is right at the beginning of the site. Everything pitches down to it. And all the utilities run through the roadway out to West Broadway, the exception of the water line, which circumvents the... Can you see my cursor? No?
Doesn't show.
Yeah. Oh, doesn't show, okay. Yeah, so the water main is going to come to the roadway at this point and then go cross-country around the infiltration basin and go into there. And that was to avoid entering into the Templeton Township with the water line because we're hooking up to Gardener Water in that area. And so that's where it ends over in that corner. So that's why we had to run it like that. In the front, up here on the right, we have the common mailbox. And then coming up, you start seeing the duplexes, which are on individual lots. And then still, it's the same kind of thing coming all the way up. There are duplexes on both sides. And with the cul-de-sac and then the drainage from the here of the site all drains down towards the infiltration in the back. So that's yet again very similar design as we had during the site plan review. The traffic report, we had it revised by Fussin O'Neil to account for this type of development versus the multifamily. Before, I believe we were up at 52 units. And with the duplex development, we're down to 32 units, 16 duplexes. And so that's what they did their traffic counts and they did their site distances and all that. We had that area staked out if you've driven by there any time in the last three or four months. And so that's where it's going to come out. But yeah, it's pretty much the same kind of concept as I presented in the preliminary. Not much has changed, just kind of fine-tuned all the drainage and everything like that. And like I said, at this time, we're still waiting for comments to come in. I think Rob is currently going over the stormwater comments. We already got some comments pertaining to zoning and the subdivision rules and regs. Looks like the only major change I'm seeing so far is when I did the roadway measurement, I measured it from the edge of the roadway on West Broadway. And you have to account for the distance from the edge of the roadway to the center line of West Broadway. So the road's just going to have to be shortened by about 14 feet, which is probably going to cause a couple of houses to be shifted, but I don't expect any major changes with that. So that is where we're at right now.
I believe Mr. Harnett wanted to confer with the engineer about what was the, extending the sewer?
I believe it was a sewer permit extension request.
All right. You're already aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is standard.
Yep.
Trevor, can you talk more about the infrastructure in the site? Sidewalks, crosswalks? Anything else you can identify?
Yep, so the sidewalks, it starts right here and it wraps around the entire site. And we're just having a sidewalk on one side of the roadway all the way down. So there's really no need for crosswalks. I don't think that you can have crosswalks if you don't have sidewalk on both sides. So it just keeps coming down and all the way to the common driveway and ends at the right of way. But there is no sidewalk to tie into on West Broadway. So that's kind of where it's going to end unless they put one in.
Landscape plan?
Landscaping plan, yeah. It's very similar to what we had before. That is the profile, profile, water plan. So yeah, this is the landscape plan. So throughout the entire development, there's several trees. All these circular little symbols right here indicate a different tree that is proposed. And so we have, you know, upwards of, you know, 45, 55 to 50 trees throughout the entire development. And it's just kind of standard to what the subdivision rules and regs call for. Come on. And that is erosion control, sediment control. And here is the lighting plan. So scale, it's not great. Yeah, anywhere you see a red dot is going to be the streetlights. So there's going to be plenty of light throughout the entire development. We have three lights around the cul-de-sac here. And next page should be the photometric plans right here. That's, you can't see much, but they, there's like contours. Essentially, the entire roadway is going to be lit up is what this entails. It'll all be downcast lighting down towards the road. So that should shed minimal light off the site. And...
What's the height of the lights, Trevor?
Height of the lights? Let's see here. Mounted on 15-foot pole.
Is there a grass strip between the sidewalk and roadway?
Yes. Yes, so. Go to the... Actually, no.
Is that your street plan?
Yeah. Just remember that. So this is the cross-section of the roadway here. So you have the five-foot sidewalk here, a three-foot grass plot, vertical granite curving, 24-foot wide pavement. Those regs were updated relatively recently. They changed the regulation from 28 feet minimum pavement width to 24. That's what that reflects. And then vertical curving on the other side. And that just shows the shoulder on the outside and then the grating.
So will any of the trees be planted in the grass?
I believe they're all on the outside of the pavement.
In the front yards or?
I think they are, if I'm recalling correctly, I believe they are all on the outside of this sidewalk. So let's see if I can zoom in on one here. Yes, you can see right here, they're right on the outside of the right of way. And that's it compared to the walkway. So they are all on the outside of the walkway as well.
And can you maybe speak a little bit about the phasing plan also?
So, so these are the different phases. So it's going to be, let's see, I think we have three different phases here. So Phase 1 starts off by constructing sediment, temporary sediment basins. And so once those are constructed, then pretty much all the other work can be started. The temporary sediment basins are an erosion control method. So when you're disturbing the site, you can just direct all the water to it. And so it filters out the water during the construction phase. So once that's done, then the roadway construction can begin. And I believe we have all that under one phase. And there's a couple of different sediment, temporary sediment basins on site. So all those have to be constructed and the roadway can be constructed and stabilized. And then once that's done, and everything's stabilized, the basins themselves can be constructed. And that's when all the conveyances for the roadway can be constructed to them, or constructed to go to the infiltration basins once everything's stabilized. That way, it doesn't interfere with infiltration capability of the basins. And then once all that's done, then the individual housing construction can start under Phase 3.
So Phase 3 will be all the structures?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it probably won't be all at once, probably one at a time. And then on-site, you know, when they do the house construction, they do smaller little temporary sediment basins as they see fit. So all that disturbance goes there. And then when stabilization happens, then they can direct all the flow to the street
Any questions from the board members? I have none. At this time, no.
The traffic report, the recommendation, one of the recommendations that I was concerned about also is the entrance or leaving the property is the vegetation. How far were you going to back up the vegetation from two-way from the road going out so people can see when they're, if they are leaving? I see you have one tree almost, in one of the photographs, you have one tree almost at the end of it, end of the road.
Yeah.
So the recommendation in the traffic, I mean, the traffic was try to make it vegetation-free, meaning no big shrubs, no big trees. So the view on both ways could be seen.
Yeah.
So I'm not too sure how much you were willing to cut back. There was no specific feet or, per se, either left or right of the driveway also. So would you know what?
I think it's kind of as an, on an as-neat basis. I mean, even after construction, it's going to come back and then they're going to have to do periodic removal of that. But if it's in the right of way, I think that's going to have to be taken up through the DOT permit. They'll take a look at, you know, the site distance and everything like that. They'll make recommendations on what can be done in their right of way. So certain linear feet, I believe anything on the basin, we're kind of grading up right to the right of way line with the grading off of that. And so we're going to have to take most of those trees along the front on that side. The area to the left, we only own, I think, about 25 feet to that side. Luckily, the right of way actually kind of comes out like into the site a little bit. So you'll have a little bit of room to clear any of the brush.
You just need to see the car go halfway through the road just to look left and right to see if you can get out safely too.
Correct, yeah.
Make sure you can get out safely.
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, the area in here, all the grating is going to be going up pretty much towards the road. So all the vegetation on our parcel should be cut down in that area. So if there's any trees, I don't believe...
Well, there was one of them. It looked like you, new trees you were planting was right, was pretty close to...
Yeah.
But obviously, that wouldn't be able to put there.
Yeah, the biggest problem with site distances is typically brush.
See right there?
Yeah, so that's...
That tree there.
Yeah, that's going to be on the backside of the even sign. So if people want to see the sign coming in.
But again, where would the sign be?
Sign.
I guess that could be blocking people's view? Or how far back is that going to be?
No, I mean, the stop sign is going to be roughly right in this area. So everything that you're seeing kind of passes through.
Are you talking to stop sign? I thought you meant maybe a sign that says, "Welcome to Compass Lane." I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So that's going to be located right here. So there's quite a long distance between this and this. It's about 15 feet from the edge of the property to the actual pavement. So if you're, if you have a stop sign right at the pavement in the front of your car, you're probably going to be six feet back with your...
Maybe that big sign. Not too short, kind of sign you're going to put up.
Yeah, so there shouldn't be, you know, an issue with site distance due to brush as long as they keep it trimmed back and, you know, and mow it. And I think they do a pretty good job because the sewer line actually runs right in this area here. So they don't allow saplings to grow. They don't allow anything to grow in that because it would make it a, you know, a hassle for the sewer line.
That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Correa. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Correa.
Question, are they going to have to apply through DOT for the high-end of Route 2A?
Yes. Yeah, they'll need an access permit. And DOT will be very thorough on things like site distances and anything that's drainage, anything that's happening in the state highway, LAL. They'll really go through the fine tooth comb. And typically, what we do with that is once we get through the first round of comments and the plans are coming to their final state, once those plans are done, then that's when we start the process with the DOT rather than having, you know, the first set of plans before the review comes through. And so it's a little bit more of a finalized state. So we're not, you know, revising the plan left, right, sending this plan over here. So it's a little bit more organized and, you know, lines aren't getting too crossed.
Did I understand, Rob, you're still studying the stormwater plan?
Yes, I haven't had the opportunity to look through everything. My comments that I submitted were basically just on my review of the subdivision with the subdivision rules and regs and zoning. I haven't had an opportunity to complete stormwater in a detailed look at it.
Thank you. All set, folks? Anything heard from staff? Very well, this is the portion of the hearing where we'll open up the public testimony. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this definitive site plan? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this definitive site plan? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this definitive site plan? Hearing none. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in opposition to this definitive site plan? All right, the lines are going to begin. You get up instead of sitting with my back too. Okay, we had, all right, your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm at Shaffer, 201 Lane, East Templeton, I'm in the butter. And I have questions. It's now planned to be a city-approved road and it's... What's the width going to be on that requirement?
The pavement width or the right of way? The pavement width is going to be 24 feet, but the width of what the city would take over is 50 feet.
I have a question about the traffic report. Do you have anything newer than the 2022 or that's the only one that is done?
Yeah, they just re-did one in 2024. And that should be available at the Gardener office. Fussin O'Neil did the traffic report, just like he did the one in the office.
Was there any significant changes in the newer one? I do not see. I saw the plans last week, but I did not see the traffic report.
Yeah, I don't believe there was any major differences between the two reports. He looked through like police records and anything like that. And I don't think he found anything too substantial in that review. But yeah, that's all available. We can get you a PDF if you want to look through it in the meantime before the next meeting.
I question, I haven't seen the newest one. So my question on the amount of traffic that's going by, I think, is significantly increased since the 2022. Maybe that was because it was post-pandemic. And when I took account just myself and the Fussin O'Neil one said that, you know, they had about 265 vehicles in an hour. And the highest one I had in an hour was 506. I had a low of 388. And then the others were 429, 488. So it's quite a bit more than the 2022 report.
And they recounted for 2024, but I don't have the numbers committed to memory. Sorry.
So I guess I have a concern about increased amount of traffic and the safety concerns that we, many of the neighbors have had about coming in and out of that area and the sightlines and the volume of traffic. It's a little bit more than I think than what was originally planned for. So I can come into City Hall and see those numbers anytime?
Yeah, I got the little portion of the report here, just a comparison for numbers. They said in the busiest hour, it's 402.3 between 4 and 5 is what they were having on that. They had that, those strips on the setup, and that's how they did the county automatic traffic recording data. So yeah, that's all in here. So if you want a PDF of that.
Is there, is there any plan about the tree cutting Phase 1 that you can let me know anything more about?
Yeah, so the extent of the whole project will be cut during the Phase 1. So the loggers only have to get in there once. Typically, they'll leave the stumps in place so the, you know, the sediment doesn't get disturbed in that. And as the phases progress, anything that's going to be constructed, that's when they dig up the stumps and to minimize the erosion potential on-site at any given time.
So the stumps that are dug up, where are they going to be moved to in the meantime before they move to off-site?
Typically, they have stockpile areas on-site that they set up. I have a couple on the, a couple of general ideas, but the contractor usually takes that into liberty. And there's rules in the EPA regulations, SWIP report, the SWIP that they have to have. They have to storm the stockpiles, protect them with erosion control and everything like that. But ideally, they're taken off-site or ground up on-site immediately.
So the tree cutting is going to go just past the end of that cul-de-sac area?
Correct, so...
What about the sidelines? Like my property abuts and other people's properties abut, how close are you going to get to the property lines?
So right here. So right here, you can see the edge of the tree line. So we're leaving as much of a buffer as we can to, you know, allow for, you know, the common mailbox and then for the grading associated with the rest of the project here. So we're trying to give you your buffer. That would be the zoning setback. All trees is what we're going to be staging out for clearing. And that's going to taper back. And there's substantial buffer back here. And then right here, this is the parcel that already has been cleared as part of that development in the back. So we kind of have to clear right up to the edge of that along the stone wall. And this is also bordering that land back there. Oops.
And on that diagram, where you have the cul-de-sac before you move off of that, at the end of the cul-de-sac, it looks like there's maybe, did I see something written up about dirt or gravel road? And what's the purpose of that?
Yeah, so that is going to be for, hold on, let me just get it up so I can speak while Right here. So it's required to have a little access road to get into the basin to maintain that. So that's just that little 20-foot strip that goes right back there for access to that area.
And can you tell me something about the elevations? What's going to change of what's there now and what it's going to be as far as like how many feet difference in elevation and what about runoff and that kind of thing?
Yeah, so typically, we have the roadway kind of intersecting the hill going on that side. So what you want to do is on the high side, which is your side, on this side, we typically cut that down. Or in this case, we have plans for the foundation that will actually have a flat backyard right here. And then the, it'll be like a drive under in the front over here. So it'll kind of, it'll be the similar drainage pattern. It'll just be a little bit more flat, down, flat, down as you go along the whole slope. And so it's a little bit more of an environmentally sensitive design in that aspect versus putting large retaining walls behind it and all that. So it's kind of trying to blend in with the hills as much as possible. If you're talking in front, let's see. Back to the front of the site. Towards you. So the contours are kind of run this way right here and kind of come around and they end up looping back around like that. And so essentially, the proposed contours are kind of coming like this and then like that. So it's very similar in design topography. It's going to fit in with it pretty well. There's not going to be large mounds or anything like that, other than where you see the basins where we had to retain water. And then it'll be kind of steeper on the downhill sides of the basins. But as far as the development itself, it blends in with the topography pretty well.
And my properties, that about five of the lots, I shouldn't expect problems with water coming in my direction?
No, everything flows downhill.
To that basin?
Correct, yeah.
In the front?
Yeah. And then, so everything flows towards the Deer Hill subdivision. But the, essentially, what the roadway does is it intersects all that flow and it routes it to the basin in the front and the basin in the back. So actually, Deer Hill subdivision should be seeing a lot less water as well.
So at the back, how is that water going to get to the back? Because it generally slopes uphill. The elevation is more uphill? How are you going to get that water to into a basin up there?
Out in the rear of the site?
In the rear, yeah.
So all this water is going to go back up here. So all this water comes down, down the slope like this, and then it hits the roadway. And we have catch basins and drainage structures. So everything will be caught in the roadway by these drainage structures. And then they come over here and there's another drainage manhole here, another drainage manhole here, and it's routed into this basin. It's discharged down towards the... And it's discharged, uh, down towards the, the wet ones around the PACC. But it's, you know, so it's, everything's routed around that whole thing and then discharged out in the open space and then to a, to a culvert at the, uh, West Broadway.
Is there gonna be any planting in the back of the lots of either side of the development? Like the ones that are near the butters, or you're not gonna do anything back there?
There'll be, uh, there'll be the, the buffer that we were, we showed earlier, that, uh, zoning setback buffer that we're gonna leave. Uh, but then it's a matter of, you know, what the homeowners wanna do in their backyard, so that's, uh, really not of our purview. They might plant trees, they, they might want just lawn, um...
Yeah, a question about the setbacks, like the ones on the, um, the eastern side? I must be trying to find the... The buffer zone, the, you said a buffer zone, so you have the setbacks where you can put buildings? So is on the... Eastern side or the western side? The eastern side is all gardener, and the western side is some Templeton, some gardener?
So all the houses are actually gonna be located in, uh, Gardner? There's not gonna be no building permits pulled in Templeton? Um, I'll show you the, uh... So in this area right here, the town line actually runs right here, this dash line. And so all the structures are gonna be located in, uh, in Gardner, not Templeton, coming across.
Snow storage and snow plowing, that's, the plowing's gonna be done by the city?
If the town accepts the roadway, yes.
Until such time, it's, uh, on the owner.
Correct.
To maintain that road.
So what's the plan and for the owner to do? Are they gonna plow, where are they gonna store the snow? If it's a lot? And what's the city plan if it was approved as a city-approved street? Do they just plow, or do they have a dumping plan for that?
I mean, yeah, you know, if it's a moderate amount of snow, I'm sure they'll just plow to the side like they do, uh, any other street. Uh, if you get, you know, a dumping or something like that, then, you know, someone would have to probably get in there with a, with a front loader and probably bring down that access road towards the back and, and dump the snow back out there somewhere. But it'll be handled like any other, you know, street in Gardner typically.
When works, when work is being done, is there a time limit of like hours of the day or days of the week that they're limited to?
Yeah, typically, it's, uh, I believe, seven or eight to, to five on weekdays, and then I think, uh, on Saturdays, eight to, eight to noon or something like that. I can't remember.
That sounds right, I don't have it memorized, Steve.
Is that, is that typically in the, the conditions of approval, if approval is granted?
It will be, yeah. I think it's typically eight to five, Monday through Friday. And I'm not sure about weekends, I mean, you might have to get special permission.
Yeah, okay.
Through the building permission.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to be heard in opposition to this definitive site plan? Is there anyone here? Sir, your name and street address, please.
I'm on the butter. Um, I had a question today, I called the, uh, Templeton PD to talk to the chief. He's on, uh, vacation, but the guy's standing in for him. Templeton PD had no idea this was going in, and the entrance is in Templeton. When the road, when they come out of the road, it is Templeton. So Templeton had no idea they were putting a, a driveway or roadway right there at that corner. Um, I, I told him, he said he would like to, to talk... He's gonna talk to the chief as soon as he gets back, they're, uh, gonna go up there. He's gonna bring the fire chief with him, and I would also ask him to, to get the gardener chief and their fire department to go up there and check that exit. To piggyback onto her, if there is a lot of snow, it's already a blind area where they're pulling out. If you have a lot of snow, they're never gonna be able to see coming out of that entrance or exit. It's a blind entrance, if you're coming from Gardner and turning in there, you're turning blind, cause it's a hill. There's, you don't know what's coming over the hill or around the corner. So that's why Templeton was upset, they were never told this was coming in or where the entrance or exit was. They seem to have a big problem with it. Also, was an environmental impact study done on this?
I don't believe so, no.
Because the area's already been compromised by, by the other builder who clear-cut the top of the hill. So we've already been having water issues. So when you cut the rest of the trees down that are going down the hill and put a few trees back in there, you're gonna overload whatever water comes down there, it's going straight down. What happens when those stormwater drains overflow? Where does the water go? How much, how much volume can that water, that those stormwater storage areas take? If we have the volume that's been coming down the hill now, and then you take all those trees out, there's gonna be even more water coming down. Nobody accounts for that. These people that do these studies have no idea what's been going on up there. They have no idea what's beyond this little picture, that above the hill has already been compromised by all those trees that they cut down, where we're already having problems with water. So, to me, these companies that do these surveys and these things have no idea what's going on up there. So a lot of that has to be taken into consideration when they're talking about, you got stormwater storage for this and that. They have no idea how much volume of water comes down. It's all ledge up there, so everything comes down that hill, and it's a long... And it all points down to this area. Everything flows into that area right now, and it's a long, straight shot that nothing's stopping it. So, to me, they, they need to get some people up there and really do a back, you know, real goods background of what's going on up there before they start any of this. Because I don't think they can control the water that's gonna come down that hill with these storage, these, uh, stormwater drains and storage, even when they start cutting all those trees down. Come this spring, that's gonna be flooded. Cause you ain't gonna have the trees back in there. Once you cut all those trees out, it's gonna be a while before you put more trees back in there. So what's stopping the water in that meantime? I don't think these little things they're putting off to the side to catch some of this water is gonna even come close to catching all the water that's gonna come down that hill.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition to this definitive site plan? Ma'am?
I just have a question about, um, fire hydrants. If, are there gonna be any on that new road, or are they just relying on what's already down on West Broadway?
There are actually gonna be two proposed, one about halfway up the roadway and then one at the, the end of the cul-de-sac. So it'll be two, two new fire hydrants up there.
And they'll have pressure to, to serve the, the purposes of fire needs in that area with those type of pilots?
Yeah, uh, I believe when we were going through the site plan approval, there was no, uh, issue from DPDW mentioning, uh, any pressure issues down at that end. Uh, they have to review it as part of, uh, this whole process again. So if they, uh, see any issues, they will flag them up.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just on this, on the opposing neutral party.
Okay.
Are you good?
Did you, did you have a comment, sir?
Yeah.
Please, okay. Your name and address, please.
Uh, Kirk Machete, I'm the chairman of the Templeton Planning Board.
Mr. Machete, go ahead.
Just a couple of questions, I don't really wanna get into the engineering aspect of it, cause line shares and gardener, although the fact that I will mention, if you don't mind, you, you the chairman, sir? And your name's what?
Mark Shafer.
Shafer, I'm not kidding. Um, thanks for letting me speak.
Certainly.
Trevor Travis?
Trevor.
All right, sorry. It's a 50/50, Shafer.
I get it, yeah, yeah.
Um, you had mentioned that you rely on the, the water coming from the, we'll call it the, the west, the high side, as it sheeting off and going into the catch bases. From, I'm just asking a question, I'm not criticizing. But is that a good engineering practice, being that we have winter here and you're shedding all the water across the, uh, city right away, onto a city street, basically from private property onto the city street? Cause I know like in Templeton, we, we frown on that, draining water from private property onto the street, where here you're actually encouraging it from the, from the design standpoint. So I don't know, just sticking a bug in the planning boards here, not my problem, not my town, okay? Um, it just doesn't seem like it should be done that way, I wouldn't allow it in Templeton. Um, second question through you, Mr. Chairman, is the applicant here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, who, who might the applicant be? Oh, okay, right there, all right. Hello.
Hey.
Why has this not been brought to Templeton yet, or do you not plan on bringing it to Templeton? Otherwise you have no way in or out?
I, I believe we're, we're gonna go to Templeton. Um, I, I believe the reason we were waiting is to get the more finalized plans as, uh, essentially it's just the, uh, the lot area in Templeton that would have to be approved in the back. And then, uh, I think...
The lot area in the back, I'm sorry.
The lot area in the back right here, so these are all part of, part of the lots. So I think it's a formality that the Templeton Planning Board has to sign off on, uh, the portion of the definitive...
Oh, portion of the NR.
Correct. Uh, and then I, I don't think it would be an NR, I, ah, it might be.
It would be...
It's kind of like a weird gray area, so we were gonna go through that, um, and then the, uh, the roadway's a, a state-run roadway, so, um, I, I don't know if, if that's...
It's still Templeton property, and quote unquote, Mr. Robertson said, "I think that the sightlines really need to be taken into consideration if not moved west." So before you put this thing into a mile hour, you might wanna consider, um, letting Templeton get involved with this, cause I just don't see it happening where it is. And I'll give you a, a hands-on, I actually happened to myself last winter, coming around the corner, it was one of those snow squalls, what have you. I come around the corner heading towards Gardner, hit my pickup truck, normal speed, come around the corner, there was a big oak tree, a, a big, a real big tree, I don't know if everybody here remembers it last year. Down, and I literally drove right through that tree. I could not stop, coming around the corner. And lo and behold, right to my right was the orange state for this road's proposed. And so I'm just looking at a school bus, um, a minivan with three young kids in it, and, um, we'll call it a gravel truck coming around the corner, or a concrete truck coming around the corner. They're gonna run right over it. The sightline's gonna work. Um, I, for one, through Templeton's capacity, will solicit the state to have that corner either lowered or a sightline moved down further, cause that's unacceptable as far as I stand. As my capacity as chairman of the planning board, I will take that to the board, that this... And I'm not against the project, I'm a developer myself. I'm against the placement of the driveway coming in, the roadway coming in, so just...
You may replace it as far west as we, as we can on, on the property, and, uh...
But once again, safety, to me, is, comes before money every time, okay? And if you're gonna put, if anybody in this room wants to put a price on somebody's life, I'd like to know what that number is right now.
Trevor, can you show a, uh, view of the entrance, please?
Just a thought, it would be over that, the sightline's shown on the...
The end of the property is right here.
Sorry, it's me, it's okay.
Uh, so essentially, the gardener's subdivision rules or regs requires this 25-foot, uh, radius, kinda like this. On this side, you just kinda ran it straight, reach to the corner, uh, you know. Just give them more land and more room to run, just makes the lines a little easier. But yeah, then, if you did run a 25-foot radius, it would come to this point, right at this point. So the only way to, uh, get through the gardeners of the individual, the regs, the, the, this proposed road, uh, without any waivers or anything like that, is to, uh, is to put it there. If, if, uh, the board is, is willing to, to, you know, uh, cede a waiver and to, you know, shorten this area up over here and the roadway over there to, uh, allow for, um, additional site distance, we'd certainly, you know, cede out, but, uh...
Can it be slitting, I'm sorry, can it be slitting east? Can it not go down east?
East?
Yes, I... Right, that's, right, try to get away from the corner.
Correct, yeah.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, the infiltration basin's right there, so we, we really need all that size, because that's the downfall portion of the site, so all this stormwater flows into the, into the infiltration basin on that side. So, uh, to, to meet the, uh, the stormwater regs in the city of Gardner, we had to size it like that, and, uh, we really need all that space. So, uh, and then if you move it that way, you're actually going downhill more, which makes this site distance even worse. At this point right now, uh, when I, I walked, there's a, this utility pole right here, there's a, uh, a diamond, a silver diamond on it. And so I walked as far as I could down this way, and I, I believe I got right to, to Baker Street, and you can actually see that silver diamond on that still. So the, the site distance doesn't, doesn't look good, but, you know, Fussin' O'Neil went through it. Uh, they came up with a site distance that was adequate to the speed that they measured, not even posted speed. Uh, and, uh, so that's kind of where we're at, and, uh... So yeah, I mean, as a three-foot grade stake in the ground right here, you might not be able to see, but, you know, like a car, you know, you know, is a little bit higher than that typically. So you might be able to, you should be able to see that a little bit better at the, at the stop sign. So I believe the, uh, the, the site distance isn't, isn't as bad as it seems as... If you can see that silver diamond all the way to, to Baker Lane. That's just, uh, my observation, uh, when I was out there. And you can, you can actually go on Google Maps, and you can actually keep going back and back and back, and you can still see that silver diamond all the way back to, to Baker Lane. But yeah, Fussin' O'Neil was the traffic engineer on that, so I, I can't... With the speed to the site distance.
I have an observation about that.
Have your, uh, we need your name and address.
I'm on the butter. So the problem really becomes, if you're headed west onto way, you're further over to the Eames house, you can't see, you're cutting off even more of looking down to, toward Baker Lane. So that, that's really more significant than you...
Heading up west this way?
Coming from this side?
Yeah, and you're trying to take a left-hand turn into your road. You can't see, your sightline down towards Baker Lane is cut down even more, cause you're on the other side of the road. And now when you're taking the turn, if you got grave cement truck coming around the corner, it's gonna be, you've only got, you know, what? Couple hundred, 300 feet maybe?
Okay.
So I think that's more significant going west. Standing on the southern side, looking at people coming this way, yeah, if you stand up in tiptoes, you can see down Baker Lane, but you're on the other side of the road looking, you can't.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll talk with the, the traffic engineer, we'll, we'll have them try to address that, that point and, uh, and hone in on that, and, uh...
And the other question I have is, is general, are these buildings or this development intended to be all rental? So people, you know, coming and going all the time, or are they gonna be owner-occupied? Somebody's gonna buy the, the condo or something and share the building?
So, uh, right now, it's, uh, it's planned to be owned by, uh, by the developers right now, but it's still gonna be a definitive subdivision, so if they wanted to sell one or two or three of the complexes, they could. It'll all be under, uh, Homeowners Association, but the individual lots can be sold. So it's not, it's not a project that's just always bought and sold by the, you know, by the same people. So it can be parsed out just because of the nature of being a subdivision, a definitive subdivision plan.
Okay. Anything further from public?
I, I don't, haven't seen that Fussin' O'Neil report for the newest one, but they, um, they've recommended distances for stopping site distance and intersection site, site distance. And out of like six of the statistics, five of them are very close to the low side of the recommended. So I don't know if there's, you know, something you can do to look at that. You know, like eastbound, it says recommend at least 385, and there's, uh, it says exists at 400. And, um, for the intersection site distances, westbound, recommended 510, and it exists at 525. Eastbound, recommended 440, exist at 444. And I don't know if that, what those numbers have changed, cause you shifted the road around, you know, in some of the plans over the past three years or more.
Yeah, I think the, uh, entrance hasn't changed, so those numbers should still be accurate. Um, but yeah, I mean, they're, they're recommending certain site distances, and they're just showing how mu- how much is provided in that. So it's, it exceeds their recommendation, that's...
But I think they're, they're on the low side, and considering there's traffic issues and accidents and things over the past month, in front of our property going towards the development, there's a vehicle went off the road on... a vehicle went off the road on, off, over the curb and went maybe 20, 24 feet across the front of my property, dug up all the sod and then was in like, there was like maybe another 25 feet before you get to your, the pins. And they must have gotten back on the road. But that was just in the past month.
Okay.
So it's concerning.
Anything further? Very well, here I am. We will continue this public hearing. Yeah, that's right, December 10th. Sorry, I left that out. We'll continue this public hearing until our December 10th session. Now let's transition into our regular meeting. First item of business, approval of minutes from August 13th since we did not meet in September and October.
Make the motion, accept the motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? My voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. All right, Private Oversight LLC proposed Compass Lane subdivision, definitive site plan under new business. After what I heard tonight and what I've seen and some of the concerns from the public, I'm leaning towards a third-party site plan review with a particular emphasis on stormwater and the traffic study.
I agree.
Guys concur?
I agree. I think it's for the best.
All right, entertain a motion to that.
I'll make the motion to go to the third party.
Review.
If you would, for a third-party traffic study and stormwater report.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We'll go by, go by the rolls, starting with me. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Old business, nothing on there. Next meeting Tuesday, December 10th, where we'll take up the public hearing for Compass Lane subdivision one more time. And that's about it. Anything further from staff?
Mr. Chairman, just so everybody understands, so the, the department heads have 45 days to respond, to provide comments to the planning board once they've received the plan. That 45 days is done up yet, so we should have all comments back for the next meeting. So if there are any additional, we can introduce them at the public hearing. And then discussion, hopefully. I've shared a scope of service with everybody on the, the traffic analysis and the stormwater review from a third party. And hopefully we'll have all that information prior to the next meeting also. So the, so the applicant has time to review it prior to, and, and the city engineer.
And you should, depending on how long it takes them to review, might, if you take it one meeting, just, you know, I know how busy they are over there. They have heavy, heavy workload, so having everything for them to be done in a month and then, you know, us revise the plans for you guys to look at, might be a stretch. But if they can get a turnaround to us and we can turn around and do that, we might be seeking that continuance just, just at the January meeting if it comes to that.
That's fine. Anything further?
I guess I just add one, just, is there any way we can send the city engineers' comments along with the plans, the time bond? That way, if there's any duplicative comments based off of like engineering practice, there's no conflicting comments. One person telling me to do one thing, one person telling me to do another thing, me not knowing who, how to rectify it.
I've already recommended that if, if there's a peer review done. So I'll work with time bond and make sure. Because I knew there were comments on stormwater that I was guiding you. And so they have the backstory on how we got to where we are.
Okay.
I wanted them to be aware of that. And I'll, I'll talk to them.
Okay. Sounds good. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't getting two different directives to make different changes.
Perfectly understand.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I will avoid.
Okay. All right, I think that's, that's it. Well, thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, I think we're done. Unless you have anything further for the board? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we adjourn. Thank you very much.